So, welcome, Director. Would you call the role?
Absolutely. Mayor Lansing?
Here.
Chairman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Rommel?
Here.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Preschak?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Looking at the agenda, we'll start off with consideration of minutes from the Finance Committee held on March 11th, 2019. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motions are approved. Item three is a consideration of executive session minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on March 5th, 2018. We need to go back and approve those. They are confidential, but I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item pertains to some legislation that we've seen coming forth in Springfield, specifically Senate and House bills related to pension funding. And as you know, we've made a big effort to try and get ahead of the pension issues for the City of Lake Forest. We were somewhat surprised when we saw these bills start to appear from Springfield. And so at the subcommittee level, with Alderman Newman and myself in the Finance Committee, Finance Department, we looked at those and concluded that there was one that we could support. And so we've offered a resolution from the City of Lake Forest in that support. But maybe Alderman Newman might have a comment on these bills, as he was the first one to really take issue with them.
Well, to me, it's, this particular resolution is about as effective as throwing marbles against the Berlin Wall. But that's typical, typical of what goes on in Springfield. So it's a symbolic gesture on our part, I believe. But we will be on record as at least taking any step we can to reduce this pension monster that's going on in Springfield.
So with that, maybe open up for any questions on the resolution, Alderman Bushman?
In light of the fact that we have some concerns about the resolutions, whether, you know, more is needed. Looking at our resolution, I think it reads somewhat unqualified. Do we want to qualify it by indicating we support them as a first positive step towards the public safety pension reform? But, you know, is there any qualification that you feel would be helpful or appropriate at this stage?
I haven't seen any, but Alderman Newman?
Oh, well, it has, but not in the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Not in the resolved part of it. The recitations have a qualifier, but not in the resolution itself.
Do you have a specific suggestion for?
Just as I said, to say as a first positive step to public safety pension reform. This would be, well, I don't have the resolution in front of me now. It says now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Lake Forest. That the city council hereby expresses its support for passage of Senate Bill 1111 and House Bill 1571 as a first positive step to public safety pension reform, if that would be more the consensus of the city.
Which suggests that we may want to take positions on other things later, that this isn't the only thing.
Rather than being an unqualified, as Alderman Moreno pointed out, in our recitation up to that, it would be consistent with the recitation of saying that, you know, indicating more is needed, which I think we all agree with, more is needed out of Springfield here. Very good. Is that okay?
I have a question for, with somebody else?
No, go ahead.
Elizabeth, my question, and I think I put this in an email today, but the thing that caught my, in Senate Bill 1111, House Bill 1571, that caught my attention was the single statewide fund. And anytime I see single statewide anything, I'm like, whoa, isn't that how we got into this mess? So I guess, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a recommendation to support this if you weren't reassured that this one was going to be okay, or is okay. This is the IMRF, is that?
Correct. So I had a great slide. Unfortunately, we're having some AV issues.
No, sorry.
But in Illinois, there are differing pension plans. There are five state-run pension funds, and those are for the teachers, state employees, state university employees, judges, and Illinois lawmakers. And those are the five state-run pension funds that you hear quite a lot about, low funded ratios and troubles with funding those pensions. We also have other pension plans in Illinois that are administered by separate boards. So we have 355 suburban and downstate police pension funds, one here in Lake Forest. We have 296 suburban and downstate fire pension funds, also one in Lake Forest. And then we have a pension fund for suburban and downstate municipal workers, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And that represents all local government, non-public safety employees. And they are aggregated and administered at a state level, but it's by a completely separate board without state involvement in the administration of that fund. And then you have seven Chicago and three Cook County pension funds in addition to those. But I appreciate your concern. I know that that's something that I often hear, is that people mistake IMRF for another one of those five state-run pension plans, but it is not.
Does the state set the guidelines for the IMRF?
It does, similar to the downstate police and fire pension fund. So it sets forth the guiding principles and the funding and the employee contribution rates, similar to police and fire.
But this one is a steadier hand.
Prue, let me just explain our thinking a little bit more. These are segregated funds. The only thing that's coming together is the management of the accounts, and that's to save fees. And those fees are substantial. But since IMRF is much higher percent funded, it would be unfair to those employees to merge police and fire in there. So they will, they will still be segregated accounts, but they'll be managed on a unified basis.
It sounds smart to me, yeah.
Right.
Well, I remember when we first got into this, Alderman Newman, you surfaced an article, a study that had been done of what is the cost, the administrative friction of having all these teeny little funds all over the state in public safety? And wasn't it like $600 per person or per beneficiary? Or something? Was the statewide average, it was an appalling number?
It was.
In terms of, in today's world of investment efficiency, going back to your question, which is that larger pools are run much more efficiently on behalf of the beneficiaries, provided the paws keep their fingers out of it, to be blunt about it.
Right. We don't, we didn't have any problem with maintaining independent local boards.
Yeah.
They serve other functions, and they're volunteers, so there's no expense there, so.
Yeah, good. Okay, good.
Do we know where we are with the constitutional amendment? I saw that being proposed again downstate.
Which one?
The constitutional amendment regarding pensions.
I haven't heard of that.
There's no, no action that we're aware of.
The only constitutional convention I've heard of is to eliminate the flat tax.
Not convention, amendment.
Amendment, right.
Amendment. You have to amend the constitution in order to?
Right. The only one I've heard is to eliminate the flat tax.
Well, I was here, all right, I'll look into it myself, but I was hearing some talk about, about going for a constitutional amendment with regard to this, but who knows where that is. Okay.
Very good. So this will be a recommendation to the city council to submit this resolution with the changes that Alderman Bushman suggested.
If I could make one note? I appreciate Alderman Bushman's recommendation. I would just note that in 2011, when the legislature did approve Tier Two, that was marketed largely as a significant step in the right direction for pension reform. So we might consider something similar to as a further, further move or further step towards pension reform, just to acknowledge that that is indeed a cost savings. It's just very far into the future when that Tier Two begins to benefit pension plans.
If that's the case, you want to redraft this resolution, and we can take it up at the next meeting? So we have, because we have Alderman Newman, Alderman Bushman's change?
I would defer to, you know, our finance director, if there's a better way of saying it.
Yeah, I would only suggest as a further step to public safety pension reform, instead of first, is all.
That's, and can I suggest that because we are making a recommendation to the council, that if we can have that change for council's consideration, we can, you know, act on it later today?
Very good. Very good. With that, I entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? May? Thank you. Moving on, in the pension area, the next item is our pension funding policy revisions, as we've continued over the last several years, trying to continue to refine our pension policies. We've, have a draft of the proposed changes, given that we're also going to have another change in, what is it, 2022 or '23, when we actually go to the rolling 15-year. This just reaffirms that we're continuing on the 100% funding path for the next couple of years, till we get to the level where we can now go to a flat trend into the future with the 15-year rolling, rolling average, rolling forward. So, any questions on the policy revisions that the director has in the package? Director, do you have any comments you want to add?
No, only just for those who may be watching or in the audience, just as a note that we've been talking about this open amortization and phasing that in over the next few years. When the pension subcommittee met with the Police and Fire Pension Board in February, one note that they made was that they would appreciate the city considering an amendment to the pension funding policy that would state explicitly that intent, so that it would be memorialized as something that the, that the city is working towards. They also wanted reassurance that as the state contribution requirements might change as we move forward, that there be some acknowledgement that the city, while the pension funding policy should generally require more contributions than the state would require as a minimum, just assurance that if the state minimum ever should exceed the contribution in any given year per the city's pension funding policy, a guarantee that the state minimum contribution requirement would be, would be levied and funded. And so that was fairly easy, because we all recognized that this is a much more aggressive means to funding the public safety pension obligations. And so we felt it was very easy to make that reassurance and acknowledge that in the policy.
Any questions?
I'm not entirely comfortable with that. We're exceeding the minimum contribution every year. I don't know what more they really want. I, I mentioned that almost rhetorically, knowing that there's really not a lot that we can do about it, but I think that's excessive.
That's where I left it. You see, I mean, if they're going to do what they're going to do, and it's, we've got to meet that minimum. We're hoping that they don't make changes particularly in the funding levels. And as Alderman Morris said, in two, three years, three years, when we get to a certain funding level, that we're then, we're then going to bend that pension cost curve down to a more reasonable and sustainable rate.
That could be, what was just mentioned could be interference to that.
So perhaps I can try to clarify. The city would always be required under state statute to make the minimum contribution requirement. The revisions to the pension funding policy regarding phasing in open amortization is always going to require a higher contribution requirement than the state minimum. And so we felt reasonably comfortable with that language just stated in the policy as an assurance to the pension boards, that there was no intent with the open phased-in, open amortization period to meet less than the state minimum contribution requirement. So it doesn't bind the city to anything going forward that wouldn't be required by state statute anyway.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Jed, I may be a little out of sync, because I think I missed at least one of those meetings. What current amortization schedule are we following right now?
I'll let the director, it's the one that's recommended by Foster and Foster.
So currently, we are doing 100% funding by 2040. We are using an entry-age, normal actuarial method with a payroll growth assumption of 2%. All of those being more conservative than the state minimum. The state minimum is 90% by 2040, using projected unit credit, and allows level percentage of pay, but doesn't dictate what percentage you use. So we have deviated from state minimum requirements in order to fund the public safety pension funds more appropriately.
So we're essentially then amortizing it over 20 years?
This year, yes.
This year?
Right.
This year.
And then every year, under a closed amortization period, that amortization period is reduced by one.
Is it expected that the state or someone in charge, so to speak, is going to recommend a moving the 2040 to 2054?
There's different years out there, but certainly initiatives underway in Springfield to reset the amortization period. It's important to remember, they've already done that twice. It was originally 2020. We'd all be funded this year if we had stuck with that. Then it was extended to 2033 in 1993, and then a few years ago was extended further to 2040. So there are those that favor and would, would like that amortization period to be extended, but it simply exacerbates the funding problem.
Well...
For those who meet the minimum, not so much for us.
But if they extend it, I mean, I guess we're, I mean, I used to, I've forgotten more than, I was about to say, I've forgotten more than I knew. It's kind of silly. I mean, I served on the board of several, several multi-employer plans way back, way back when, actually, three. And at the time, believe it or not, I think, my recollection is like in, in ERISA in 1974, recommended a 40-year amortization. And things were quite fine for a very long time. And then, I don't really know why, I think it was because of the PBGC, some issues they might have been having, that around 2006, the Pension Protection Act was passed, and they lowered the 40% to 15%. And then two years later, 2008, with the great beginning of the Great Recession and the market falling in total disrepair, to me was the, what I thought was the beginning of the demise of employee benefit, or employee defined benefit pension plans as we've known, as we know it now, which to me, it was a, is a terrible thing that ever happened. Because those who are coming now were going to be ending up retiring with no DB plan. They'll only have the defined contribution plan. Where heretofore, a lot of the employees, the 30-year employees, would be likely retiring with 50% of their pension. And then with their, with their DC thing, they'd have an extra 25%, so they'd have 75%, and be living at a very nice, normal retirement, at 75% of their, essentially their final average pay. We're going to have a crisis down the road, and I think it's as a, as a result of this. I don't know that an amort, changing an amortizing, amortization schedule at this point is ever going to bring those plans back. However, I'm not going to be here when you, when they, when they do the 2015 or whatever. I mean, it seems to me that somehow the, a 30-year amortization is the right number.
Jed, I would say your memory is intact. That's a wonderful shorthand description of the death of defined benefit plans.
Yes.
The state situation's a little different, okay?
Oh, I'm just talking about us and the way we fund. I'm not talking about the state. I'm talking about the City of Lake Forest and how we fund.
I know, but what the state does, the city has to do, because they run the pension plan. We have very limited running room in terms of what we can do. And this, once we get to a somewhat higher funding level, we are going to go to an open amortization plan, because we will then be meeting what was the initial premise and principles of those defined benefit plans back in the old days. It's a very complicated subject to get into tonight, but this is what Alderman and Morris?
Essentially that smoothing, sorry, I didn't write that. That's that smoothing that we adopted six to nine to whatever, is essentially going to that form of amortization?
Yes, yes.
Okay, fine, okay.
We do have control over the inputs and the assumptions that go into the, to the calculation of the contribution. We do have some leeway there, and we took a pretty hard look at that and came up with our current model, that I think, we take our lead really from Elizabeth and the actuary about what our contribution would be, not state policy, because that's a fool's shit.
Right. No, I agree, I agree.
So, I think we're in pretty good stead. I worry about this 100% funding and 90% funding. If there is a crisis, I think we'll be at a disadvantage.
Yeah, but I think Elizabeth, with that wording, is calling out that some reviewers at the state might be looking at what we're saying, what we're doing here and saying, well, gee, they're going off on their own. And all we're saying is, is that when as and if the state, which has always set a minimum contribution level, makes some adjustment to it, we will comply, which is to say, we're not going rogue on them.
No, no.
And we don't want any, speaking publicly, more inspection of this. It is an excellent program, is the way to move forward. Other municipalities are adopting this in Illinois. We just hope that?
But having allowed cities to do the minimum contribution to get to Elizabeth's point, when you extend the deadline, you're making it worse. This is just like a credit card. At 18%, you have a $1,000 bill, you make the minimum $25 payment, the next month your bill is larger.
Right. It is such a complicated subject. The reason is back to the 1993 that Elizabeth mentioned. They extended the date, but they set the minimum so darn low that people didn't adequately fund, ratably, year over year. And I think, and then they increased benefits along the way, and it just fell hopelessly behind. So...
We'll continue to review the assumptions yearly, correct?
Yes, you will.
With our actuary, so.
So this is intended to be fiscally responsible for the city and the two funds, two public safety funds, that we'll get the 80% funding and carry that forward. We've assumed that we're always going to be ahead of where the state contribution is going to be required, because they're going to keep kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, there's too many municipalities, too far behind, so.
All the constituents. With that, kind of a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thanks for all that conversation. It's a complicated subject, and we've spent a lot of time talking about this, both in workshops and in finance committee meetings. So we'll continue to visit this on a regular basis. The next item, I'm going to ask the director to comment on the city investment policy and the investment program recommendations she's putting forward.
I know Biddy made some copies. I think you just have the budget presentation, right? You don't have the finance committee slides? Okay. So the city has long benefited from a very mutually beneficial relationship with Lake Forest Bank and Trust. And the benefit to the city is that we receive a very competitive rate on our depository balances. And that money remains fully liquid and collateralized at 110% of market value. So in a low interest rate environment, given the restrictions the city has on investing, in accordance with state statutes, there has been no real benefit in having an investment program. In 2017, we came to the Finance Committee with an updated investment policy. It had not been updated since 2004, in an investment procedures manual, recognizing that as interest rates rise, there might be an opportune time for the city to begin investments, instead of, and deviating from the depository bank relationship. So in February and March, we met with four different companies to discuss and review different options available to the city. One was a completely self-service portal, an online portal through multi-bank securities, where you can go on, you can review different types of investments, you can look at yields across all different markets, and make those transactions online. Very easy to use, very friendly for reporting purposes. We also met with a firm that would do investment advisory services. So they would, based on the city's investment policy, make recommendations to the city and receive authorization to go ahead and make those purchases on the city's behalf, and then there's a fee associated with that. The other two firms presented investment management, where the city would simply provide an overarching policy direction, and the investment manager would have the ability to make trades, buys and sells, as they felt was appropriate for the city. In looking at all of those options, and I'm sorry, the green light's on, but I know the microphone's not working, we considered those different options, as well as a few different considerations, as stated, the statutory limitations. So the city, in these monies that we're talking about investing, we can invest only in certificates of deposit, treasury obligations, agency securities, corporate bonds. It was nine months, the state has changed that up to three years. Very few types of fixed income securities are available to us. And so we took a look at the competing rates that the city could earn under different scenarios, as well as the expenses related to those three options. And based on review of all the information, we're recommending at this point that the city go ahead and proceed with multi-bank securities, the products E-Connect Direct. The fees are built in, so you see all the investments net of fees, so there isn't any outlay of expenses on the city's part. And we can take advantage of that portal and do those reporting options as a first step. Should that change going forward, and the Finance Committee wanted to pursue either an investment advisory or investment management relationship, it would not change that. We would still be able to do that, and we would go through a competitive RFP process for those services. But that would be our recommendation. Now, should the committee concur, then we would begin to work with multi-bank securities to execute the paperwork. And then, under the investment procedures manual, there are some things we would come back to the Finance Committee for further direction on, which is segregating the city's funds between liquid and core, which would provide direction on how much could be invested in other securities and other investment vehicles, as well as the appropriate benchmark. What would be the appropriate benchmark based on the city's direction to monitor the actual interest rate that's being earned versus the benchmark? So that is our recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just to be totally clear, on the, so in using this platform, of which you see more and more of these, with respect to, we're still going to be channeled into certain types of securities and risk levels and that sort of thing. But, but within that rigor, is it, what, the staff, or is there any outside help in choosing which of those we're going to take?
No, we would just follow the investment policy and the investment procedures manual. But we would get some general direction on asset allocation from the Finance Committee and work within that.
Yeah, okay.
Couple of questions. Do you, under this platform, do you retain 110% collateralization?
We do. It's, so... It's, so the, what happens is it's not collateralization because it's not depository, but we would have it in safekeeping. So, it would be in custody with a third party, and those would be in the city's name. So, it is the lowest investment risk because the securities are backed by separate securities with a third party, and they are with the city's name. In case something should go sideways, we would go to that escrow and pursue that opportunity.
Are there controls on the platform that would prevent you from investing in a particular class of fixed income securities that is not approved by the policy?
It is. So, all of that, based on state statute and the city's own investment policy, is built into the application, and so you don't see investments that aren't consistent with your guidelines.
Lastly, are there protections against, I don't know, a disgruntled employee going in and making inappropriate trades? Is it, I assume, password protected somehow?
It is password protected, and then it would also require a second person to approve. So, that would probably be the assistant director and myself, so one could begin the execution of a trade, and the other person would have to approve it.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is going to require the finance committee, which is all of us, to sort of indicate how to allocate assets, correct?
Yes. What we would come back is to compare what the fund balances are in individual funds, look at the volatility of the revenues in those funds, and provide the finance committee a recommendation of how much money is available in those fund balance reserves and available for investing. The finance committee would approve or revise that for direction, so that we would retain more than enough fund balance in liquid depository bank accounts to handle operations, but then would allow that, for example, we all have, we have minimum fund balance targets in many of our funds, and that money is just intended to sit there. So, that becomes a really, a really good opportunity to look for some duration and increase yield with other investment vehicles.
But we're going to be deciding which investment vehicles and how much to put in each investment vehicle, is that correct?
Yes. So, we'd come back, so for example, we would say, here is the amount of money that we're suggesting is available for investing, and we would suggest 40% of that in certificates of deposit, 20% in treasuries. But keep in mind that the limitations on the types of investments are so specific that there, it's not like you'll be making decisions regarding large cap and small cap equity investments. Those aren't available to us.
Right, I understand that, but it still is sort of a, an additional burden, or, you know, or whatever, that we're undertaking as a body, which we didn't have before, sort of, an additional exposure to some extent, I suppose, although I think the risk, as you point out, is low because we're so limited. I mean, I've sat on investment committees before that are determining large cap and small cap and all of that, so I certainly understand that this is a lot less risk, but it still is, I think it's a real shift in what we've been doing, that I think...
It's just a convenient platform, right? I mean, you used to do all the same kind of trading over the phone or whatever, now you've got a computer platform, so most of what you're doing is already set forth in the investment policy, right?
Right. And so, for example, certificates of deposit would never eclipse the FDIC insurance. We would look to make sure that there was no certificate of deposit in any bank above 250,000, and so all the certificate of deposit balances would be fully insured. So, we would be going with a very low-risk investment program.
Right, no, I understand that, but still, you're making the decision whether it's going to be a six-month CD, a nine-month CD, a three-year CD, you know, certain decisions and looking at rates that you're getting based on, you know, which decisions you're making. So, I mean, it is, there are some decisions to be made with this whole...
Well, but the staff's going to make a recommendation. The finance committee will be reviewing the policy. And again, the policy latitude is minimal. Insured CDs, rated, you know, double A or better securities, you know, money instruments and so forth. So, it's, no, we're not picking stocks or picking which government bonds we're buying.
Right, no, I understand that, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I think we do need to understand that it is a, it's a real shift in what we've been responsible for, actually. I mean, we're always responsible for it, but it still is a change.
I haven't been on the council that long in a year, but it sounds like this has been a policy in that interest rates and the market yields have gotten to a point where it makes sense to consider, so, I mean, this is pretty straightforward cash management. People do this all the time. There's allocations, and you have to manage both, you know, the target balances and the yield and the risk, and obviously, all the custodian issues and the security things that Alderman Newman mentioned. But this is, this is something that we think, based on our fund balances, we could put them to work and maintain our liquidity in a safe program to improve yields, to increase income for our taxpayers in our town, and I'm really confident that we can nail this.
Right, but if the city got a half a million dollar real estate transfer tax tomorrow, and the finance committee doesn't meet again until July, you know, they're not just going to leave it doing nothing.
Right, yeah.
She'll take care of it.
Of course, that's the whole point.
Right.
Just a quick question on clarification. The fully liquid and collateralized 110%, I read that, and I maybe am reading too much between the lines, but does that then imply that that collateral may be traded by the institution in order to earn at least 35 basis points over the 90-day T-bill? I just, I'd like to understand how that one works.
With Lake Forest Bank and Trust? Yeah, I will say that one of the biggest benefits of having gone through this process was sitting down, having a really, really good conversation with the bank, because in prior communities, I've run into trouble with banks continuing to be willing to collateralize at 100 or 110% of your bank balance, and especially having those securities set aside in the name of the city, which is what we have with Lake Forest Bank and Trust. And so, my concern was that our depository bank agreement with Lake Forest and Bank and Trust ends at the end of this year, and we'll be looking to renew or review other depository bank relationships. And so, a large benefit was to understand clearly that they see this as a mutually beneficial relationship. So, they are taking those funds and they are loaning them and earning money on it, and so they don't, they don't have any intent to change those very nice benefits for the city, because they've, they've been able to have that over a number of years and know that those are solid balances that they can put to work for themselves.
And when they put those balances to work, their experience has been very well managed, back to Melanie's point and Jim's point, that the balances are very well managed, the loans are managed, and they have had a very low risk of default or of exposure and not getting receipts.
Right.
That would be my concern on a collateralized obligation.
And a further note on the collateral, they have to seek city's approval to remove any of those securities from the collateral, so...
Okay. We'd just pay extra special attention to that one and just understand it.
Okay, thank you. So, come back to the recommendation that the director's put forward. We'd like to recommend the acknowledgement that we'll have an annual review of the city's investment policy, and we're going to authorize the staff to execute an agreement with multi-bank securities for the E-Connect Direct. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll turn back to the director.
Can I just ask one question, Jed? So, we look at our investment policies annually. I guess at this time, so will the fact that we're taking this new step, there won't be any need to change anything in the investment policies at this time?
No, actually, products like E-Connect Direct are specifically allowed under the city's investment policy. The only change we did consider was the legislative change that occurred in the last year, which was moving the limit on commercial paper from nine months to three years. We're not ready to go that route immediately, so we thought we would wait on that recommended change until we kind of get things going with multi-bank securities and see how it all works out, so...
This is, I mean, I see you don't have any changes recommended this year, but I think it's really great to look at this every year regardless as things come up, so I think it's, I think it's terrific that we're doing that.
Very good. We're going to go back to the director again. We've been working on policy changes for the purchasing policy, working with the director and the city manager on trying to improve, I would say, internal controls around the purchasing policy, and we've made some progress. We think that this coming year, we're going to really focus on totally revamping our purchasing policies in concert with the city manager, the city attorney, and the director. But Director Hubble, would you like to comment on, at this point in time, where we're at?
Thank you, Chairman. So, you do have some proposed red line revisions to the purchasing directive for fiscal year 20. I'm going to summarize those, and then I'll answer any specific questions you might have. This is what we are seeking to accomplish with these changes. First, we had a gap and needed to clarify consistency between authorizations, because right now, we, our practice is that the department head has authority up to 5,000, so 4,099. City manager has authority from 5,000 to 19,999, and the city council approves 20,000 or greater. When we switched over to BSNA software this year, we recognized that now that we have all these approvals going through online within the system, we had a gap, because if it was between 5,000 and 9,999, it required a piece of paper to approve, because the department head didn't have authority, but the city manager was only approving requisitions of 10,000 or greater in the system. So, what we're doing in this policy is adjusting that to make sure that it's 5,000 across the board, and the city manager will now approve any requisition in the system over $5,000 through the financial software. Second, when appropriate, what we're suggesting is that requests for proposals and qualification-based selection procedures are essentially the same as competitive bidding, and it's only for professional services, so there's specific services that are allowable for the city to use criteria other than cost in determining the vendor they recommend. So, the changes here, set those two apart, qualification-based RFP processes are no longer an exception, they are simply allowed for those types of services. Third, under the section 9.0, exceptions, you've noticed that we've really tripped over things this last year regarding exceptions versus waivers. So, the changes here are to note that all exceptions are simply allowable exceptions. And so, if someone is using joint purchasing or some other exception allowable under the purchasing directive, that will no longer be listed in the title, the council action as a waiver. One question I do have for the committee is if you would still like to see that in the body of the write-up, just that there's an exception or not. Next, so we have a new section 9.2, which is very clear and explicit regarding waivers of procedures, and that is, if an item has not been competitively bid, a request for proposal and qualification-based selection process for professional services did not apply, and no other exception listed in the purchasing directive applies, then that is when that department will need to seek a specific council waiver that will be listed as a waiver in the title, and it does require two-thirds vote, it always has, two-thirds vote of the council to approve. So, that will significantly reduce the amount of items that you will see on a council agenda as a waiver, but we felt that it was clear, and that was kind of the direction and intent of the council over the last year, we believed. Lastly, there are some procedural changes related to the ERP, the implementation of the BSNA software. So, we just made some procedural adjustments to reflect that. In all cases, it's improved internal controls, or it's automating a process instead of using paper, but didn't really result in any policy change, just procedural clarifications in the document. So, if you have any specific questions regarding the changes, the city manager and the city attorney and myself have all gone through these, so those, it's a combination of suggestions from the three of us, but...
If not, we'll take a motion to approve the...
I guess the one clarifying question. You mentioned that there was a question on whether we wanted the exception as a written-up item. I'm not sure what you meant. I would assume if we're going to the joint bidding program, that should clearly be spelled out in the write-up as an approved exception. So, what was your question?
So, what I would suggest, and I believe it's the intent of what we've heard from the council over the last several months, is that if it's an exception under 9.0, section nine, and not a waiver according to section 9.2, then the council action title and council action would not say waiver, but we're suggesting that somewhere in the body of the paragraph, you would be alerted to the fact that, you know, there was an RFP process, or this is a joint purchase through a state bid or another joint governmental initiative.
I would think that would be quite appropriate.
Yeah, because it's been misleading, the way it's been labeled.
I think Alderman, Reisenberg pointed this out last time, why are we doing waivers? So, so again, we're going to be doing basically a total rewrite of these policies over the coming year, so you'll see this coming back with a lot of changes based on our work with the city manager and his experience, and Director Hubble, and your experience and prior jobs on the community, so. So, I entertain a motion to approve the proposed purchasing policy revisions.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Where that's coming from? Thank you. So, that brings us to other business. We have the flash report from March 2019. Any questions for the director on that? Supplemental appropriation ordinance? Any questions on that? If not, that brings us to the public. If there are any, anyone in the audience who would like to address the finance committee? Seeing none, that brings us to the end of the finance committee meeting. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we'll take a short break. How long?
Four minutes.
Four-minute break.
Four, not five?
This train has left the station.
Thank you, everybody. All right. How long will this be? Five minutes.
It's blowing over.
All the hot air's coming around.
I don't know what you want to do, about four minutes, all right?
Next item, comments by the mayor. All I have for tonight are some board and commission reappointments and appointments. With regard to the senior resource commission, the appointment of Gail Stringer Wayne as chairman of the senior resource commission, continuing in her family decades of service to the city. I can't help but notice. Thomas Sullivan reappointed from Ward Three to the senior resource commission, and Mark Duarte appointment from Lake Bluff for that joint community, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff commission. May I have a motion to approve those appointments?
No moves.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Next item is comments from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Good evening. I have one item tonight, just as a reminder, at the March 4 meeting after many months of discussion, the city council approved the North Beach access road repair project. And again, for the public's knowledge, that was necessary to address the bluff failure that occurred last June. I'm pleased to report that construction is underway. However, given, you know, the scale of the project, it's still not expected that for the new Hughes Gateway to be completed until probably early September. And so that, of course, brings with it a lot of logistical challenges for parking and access to the beach for residents. And to address those challenges, recreation staff developed operational procedures for the council's consideration tonight. And here to present that is Joe Mobile, our superintendent of recreation. So, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, as was said, I am here before you to kind of talk about our 2019 operational procedures for lakefront, to ask you for your support as well as approve the procedures before you. The 2019 season is going to quickly be upon us before any of us even realize it's summer. But it's going to present some additional challenges to us this year, based on the Hughes Gateway project and the construction on the north end.
Joe, would you mind talking into the microphone?
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. So, before you are on the screen, there's a, there's a map that was made up through our GIS department that kind of shows, I know it's small on the screen, but it's also in your packet, shows the layout of the lakefront. And as you can see, Deer Path Road is the main artery to reach the facility. There won't be a north access, so you won't be able to turn left off of Deer Path Road this year. That will be closed for the construction. So, the only direction you go is right or south. The Ring Road will also be closed because the north end of that will be tied up with the construction, and there won't be an exit point. So, that will be closed as well. The green lot that is on the picture is our South Beach parking lot. So, the upper road is where the three dots are with the circle parking lot. You go down the road, and that's, that's the area that we're focusing on, and that's the only access point for vehicular traffic this summer. So, briefly, the process that we've kind of gone through, staff have been reviewing several different options over the past several months, including, you know, a kind of a first come, first served, the parking lot is just open, and we eliminate the permitted use this year. We looked at leaving it just for permitting, and, you know, many of our neighboring communities had said that they would just say, you know, find parking and move that in that direction. But we've come up with a kind of a hybrid process where we want to be fair to the permit holders who, you know, pay to use the lot and have for, you know, many, many years, as well as the normal resident use that have now lost that north end. After we've gone through the options, we had a meeting with many city staff from all of our departments to kind of go through our recommendations, go through some of the challenges that they might have seen in the policy, and really had a great conversation about what would work, what wouldn't, took some really good ideas from that, and drafted the procedural, or the procedures that are in front of you. We did then, in March, at the Park and Recreation Board, met with them, took some feedback, and received their approval of these procedures as well. So, our goals for the summer with the operations is, one, we want to continue to provide our exceptional customer service experience, or customer experience for the resident. The beach is such a gem, and people love to spend their summers down there, and our goal is really to continue to provide that customer experience. We also want to be able to manage the resident expectations. You know, those are going to be different this year based on the gateway project, and our staff are going to work, you know, hard to meet those. And the fourth, or the third, is the balance of resident use versus permit use. I kind of touched on that, but the south end has always been a permit lot, so there's a South Beach parking permit, the boaters have permits, we, you know, they have a compound to store their, their boats. And those permit holders have been affected for the last, including this year, for the last four years, based on road projects. So, 2016 and 17 were the South Road. Twenty, last year, we refunded money based on the closure at the time that the bluff went, and now this year, we have given them a prorated refund based on, you know, needing parking for the, for the months of the summer. So, they've been affected for the past four years, and we're trying to manage those expectations as well as just the general user. So, the challenges that we face this year is, obviously, the north lots closed, and with that closure, we lose 104 parking spaces. That limits, you know, the number of guests that can park onsite. The other, another issue is, you know, staff parking. Where are our staff going to park? On a daily shift, we have about 20 to 25 staff on premise. Between weekdays is beach and sailing, weekends is all, you know, beach operations. So, to try to find 20 to 25 spots where we can park staff. And the third was to manage the stress of the staff and, and also the facility. You know, last year, we had, on weekends and holidays only, so this isn't weekdays, we had 9,757 vehicles on the south end of the beach. In those vehicles were close to 17,000 guests on just Saturdays and Sundays for the summer, which, as you'll see moving forward, it's about 33 days of operations. We had close to 17,000 people visit the lakefront. So, our recommendations that we're hearing before you this evening are such. So, we're asking that Monday through Friday, so the weekdays, will utilize the South Beach parking lot for all residents. So, any car that, or any vehicle that has a City of Lake Forest sticker, will be able to park there Monday through Friday. There's 88 regular parking spots, there's five handicap, and then there's 36 trailer spaces. So, we will park them in the 88 regular, the five handicap. Now, if we feel that losing the four handicap spaces on the north is a burden, and we don't have enough to meet the need of the community, we will have temporary signs that we can mark a couple extra spots for, you know, handicap access. We do meet the state laws that require the number of spots per number of, you know, space, so we are in compliance. But if we feel that there's a need, losing those four spots on the other end, we are able to add those moving forward. The middle row, which is the trailer spaces, will be reserved for compound and watercraft permits. So, if we see that during the week, we're not getting a lot of use, our staff are going to monitor that, and then we will different options over the past several months, including, you know, a kind of a first come, first served. The parking lot is just open, and we eliminate the permitted use this year. We looked at leaving it just for permitting, and, you know, many of our neighboring communities had said that they would just say, you know, find parking and move that in that direction. But we've come up with a kind of a hybrid process, where we want to be fair to the permit holders who, you know, pay to use the lot and have for, you know, many, many years, as well as the normal resident use that have now lost that north end. After we've gone through the options, we had a meeting with many city staff from all of our departments to kind of go through our recommendations, go through some of the challenges that they might have seen in the policy, and really had a great conversation about what would work, what wouldn't, took some really good ideas from that, and drafted the procedures that are in front of you. We did then, in March, at the Park and Recreation Board, met with them, took some feedback, and received their approval of these procedures as well. So our goals for the summer with the operations is, one, we want to continue to provide our exceptional customer service experience, or customer experience for the resident. The beach is such a gem, and people love to spend their summers down there, and our goal is really to continue to provide that customer experience. We also want to be able to manage the resident expectations. You know, those are going to be different this year, based on the Gateway Project, and our staff are going to work, you know, hard to meet those. And the fourth, or the third, is to balance the resident use versus permit use. I kind of touched on that, but the south end has always been a permit lot, so there's a South Beach Parking Permit, the boaters have permits, we, you know, they have a compound to store their boats. And those permit holders have been affected, including this year, for the last four years, based on road projects. So 2016 and 17 were the south road. Last year, we refunded money based on the closure at the time that the bluff went, and now this year, we have given them a prorated refund based on, you know, needing parking for the months of the summer. So they've been affected for the past four years, and we're trying to manage those expectations, as well as just the general user. So the challenges that we face this year is, obviously, the north lots closed, and with that closure, we lose 104 parking spaces. That limits, you know, the number of guests that can park on site. The other, another issue is, you know, staff parking. Where are our staff going to park? On a daily shift, we have about 20 to 25 staff on premise. Between weekdays is beach and sailing, weekends is all, you know, beach operations. So to try to find 20 to 25 spots where we can park staff. And the third was to manage the stress of the staff and also the facility. You know, last year, we had, on weekends and holidays only, so this isn't weekdays, we had 9,757 vehicles on the south end of the beach. In those vehicles were close to 17,000 guests on just Saturdays and Sundays for the summer, which, as you'll see moving forward, it's about 33 days of operations. We had close to 17,000 people visit the lakefront. So our recommendations that we're hearing before you this evening are such. So we're asking that Monday through Friday, so the weekdays, we'll utilize the South Beach Parking Lot for all residents. So any car that, or any vehicle that has a City of Lake Forest sticker, will be able to park there Monday through Friday. There's 88 regular parking spots, there's five handicap, and then there's 36 trailer spaces. So we will park them in the 88 regular, the five handicap. Now, if we feel that losing the four handicap spaces on the north is a burden, and we don't have enough to meet the need of the community, we will have temporary signs that we can mark a couple extra spots for, you know, handicap access. We do meet the state laws that require the number of spots per number of, you know, space, so we are in compliance. But if we feel that there's a need, losing those four spots on the other end, we are able to add those moving forward. The middle row, which is the trailer spaces, will be reserved for compound and watercraft permits. So if we see that during the week, we're not getting a lot of use, our staff are going to monitor that, and then we will use the, those spaces beginning at the south end of the lot, so closest to the south pavilion, and we can start parking two cars in each of those to add spaces, depending on the use of the boat and compound usage. And that brings us then to weekends and holidays. So weekends and holidays, we're requesting that the South Beach Lot is the permit lot again. It's for permit holders only. The resident parking will be done behind Deer Path School, that's a large lot, and we will be running shuttles through our bus company for our programs and camps to get the residents from Deer Path to the lakefront. You know, if they want to go down and drop families off, and then one person can take the car, take the shuttle, you know, we can work that into the process. But to alleviate a lot of the congestion, and the weekends, of course, are the busiest, and we have a lot of boaters and a lot of the permits to use that, you know, we're going to try to park off-site, Deer Path being the largest lot, and then shuttle people by bus. You know, we'll be able to control the shuttles. Right now, we're looking at one bus to see, but it'll run continuously from 9:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., and accommodate, you know, as many of our residents that we can. As far as the staff parking issue, we have looked at many different options, from Lake Forest College, like we used last year. However, they are having their own construction project, and that lot is not available to us this summer. We've talked to Presbyterian Church, and that isn't going to work with all of their programs and then the services on the weekends. So if you start looking at other off-site locations for staff, we are running into proximity to their job. And these are, you know, kids that work shifts, and so parking them, say, at the rec center and taking a shuttle, isn't optimal, because you've got, now you've got to have a shuttle driver that can drive and just pick up staff and shuttle them through all the shifts. So we're recommending that the staff parking will be in the upper south lot, which there are approximately room for 18 cars. It is not a lined parking space, they're just open, so we can then manage that as far as the number of cars that will fit our staff. It also then allows us to better utilize that for access of cars that come down that may not have the right parking permit for that day, and they have to then go through that lot to exit back onto lake. So, you know, we'd like to keep our staff on-site for those reasons. And then we are also going to be using a golf cart shuttle, like we did last year, providing access from the south lot. They can pack all of their things in themselves, and our staff will drive them to the north pavilion and drop them off, and we'll be running two golf carts on the weekends and one on the weekdays, just continuously from the north to the south, so that people can get their things from their car and so forth. Last year, I know we also helped, you know, if people, and by the way, the shuttle bus, I didn't mention it, but it'll be dropping off, it'll take the south road down and dropping off at that pavilion, so all of their things that will be on there can be easily transferred to the golf cart and then moved to where they need to go. So our permitting services that we have currently at the beach, we are not going to be renting our pavilions or the fire circle this year. The number of spaces, it was just an easy decision to suspend those for the summer, so we opened up the spaces that would come with those to the general public to be able to park. Our camps, who come down, usually take a bus. The bus used to be parked on-site, it's going to have to leave and then come back and pick up their camps. There's no room for buses to park there anymore this year. We are going to continue, however, our caretaker passes, our daily boat launches, and our guest parking passes, on the weekdays only. We're going to start with that. If we see that it isn't a problem, we may expand that moving forward, but right now, for weekdays only, we are going to continue those services. As far as coordination of this plan is, like I said, we've already met with staff, but these are the key departments that are affected also by the road closure. So fire, they will access the south, and they will be, have an ATV that can get to the north end. However, we are going to have what you call kind of in-services or practice sessions throughout the summer. Our staff already does in-services on early Tuesday mornings. This will be part of it, is the emergency access to get fire and the paramedics to the north end if something were needed. Police are going to provide additional support, mostly on the weekends. For the first, you know, four or five weekends, they will provide us with a bike patrol officer that will be able to help with, you know, issues that arise. Streets are going to provide us with additional signage as we start the process of what signs we need to inform people. But the biggest component is our marketing. As far as the marketing, we have different methods that we are reaching in our community once this is, if this gets approved. We have a brand, I don't know if anyone can see from here, but that parking sign there, that'll be branded on every beach communication that we do, so that way they know that it's tied to the parking and the procedures. But we are going to be reaching out through, you know, as many signs that we're allowed and that we can put up that doesn't look poorly. We are going to be doing press release, once this is approved. We've got the cover of the dialogue and a section inside outlining everything for all community members. We're going to be doing a direct mailer or through constant contact to all of the residents and the Forest Park Board that is tied to that. We'll be doing an insert in Lake Forest Leader, ads in local papers, logos and pics for the marketing materials, be consistent so that everyone understands what we're looking at, flyers, posters, street signs, possibly Burma signs, constant contact, social media, and then website presence. So our goal is, once this is approved, is to really flood all of this information out through the community, so that if there are questions or there's confusion, it can be asked early, so that we can alleviate some of the congestion when we open Memorial Day weekend. So that's the marketing, you know, end of things. As far as cost go, we're not here asking for, you know, costs or support financially. This is something that'll be kind of just taken in the beach operations operating budget. But the cost to have a school bus shuttle on the 33 weekend days is just over the $18,000. The two golf carts are $5,400. Additional staff that we're going to have to have at Deer Path Park to manage our shuttles, you can see that's close to $3,000. So a total estimated cost for doing this plan is just shy of $27,000. Now, staff will manage it throughout the season to see if there's, you know, rain days, we don't have a need for shuttles as long. You know, if we maybe can send staff home, depending on weather, but we're going to really work and manage our costs through the summer to bring that number down, knowing that, you know, it probably won't reach the zero, but we'll find other ways that we'll be able to offset some of the costs through our operations. And then you can see the estimated revenue loss. So we have already prorated our South Beach permit fees for the three months of the project, and so that's $37 off of the fee per permit holder. So if anybody would like to purchase a South Beach Parking Pass for the weekends, instead of parking at Deer Path, that is an available permit that someone could purchase to be able to park down there on the weekends as well. But that is a to-date number, based on the permit revenue and the number of parking or South Beach permits sold. That number will increase, but it was too hard to forecast what that might be, because currently the permits purchased are down from where they were last year at this time. So if that picks up, you know, we'll have a better idea of what that prorated, $37 times however many, as well as if we sell other permits or things. So I just don't have a good number, other than to date is $8100 is what this proposal's going to cost us in a revenue loss. So that is the, kind of the plan overview. Like I said, we looked at many different ideas, and trying to be equitable to not only the resident who wants to use the facility, but also the resident who are permit holders that have been affected by this for now the fourth year. We're trying to find a balance that, you know, will work. Nothing's going to be perfect, there's always going to be, you know, some concerns with anything before you, but this is what staff and our park board has kind of found to be what we, you know, the best option. So questions?
Well, Joe, it looks awfully thorough to me. In my experience here at the city, I have learned that no group of people knows more about how the beach really works than the recreation department. So your recommendations come with a certain gravity and substance, and it is complicated, it's not so simple. Just two recommendations, because there's always the 10 to 30 percent who never get the mail, never read their mail, or whatever, is that, and there's going to be some surprised people, and to take the pressure off the people, your summer students, who are at the gates and at the tops of the stairs, is to, on this flyer you were passing out, you know, do it two-sided, and have those so they can hand to people, instead of them having to explain it and all that. Give them the same information. Number two, I think at each entry point is to have a sign that is puts up, and frankly has all of this, maybe some larger lettering or something, and do it ASAP. So this is cumulative knowledge, because so many people will go to the point of entry to the beach before they have ever thought about, gee whiz, there's something going on at the beach.
Right. And we already, I mean, we have just, I mean, here is another piece that will be going out, or being posted. You know, we have this one as well. So our marketing department, Chris and Brittany and Susan have been really working ahead of things, just waiting for the, okay, this is what we're going to do, and this is going to be out, you know, everywhere, posted, signs, entries, you know, like you said, handing it to people. We want to make sure that, yeah, you're not going to hit everybody, but we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to be informed.
Right.
So.
Terrific. So as a former beach guard in 1986, I appreciate the handouts to talk to people that are maybe outside of the community, or even in, that will help buffer the interchange, because it can be tough. I wanted to ask you a question on the beach, on the south side. How many permits are purchased a year, and what do you think capacity is realistically? And did you consider maybe day passes? Because if the lot's not full, and people haven't gotten on the stick to go ahead and buy those new permits, even if they're discounted, you can imagine a scenario where people get down there, and they're ready to park, and there's capacity, like why not have a $20 day pass to park down there if there's capacity and they don't have to go to the Deer Path? And the second point, I think, is maybe a really good opportunity for us to take a step back and say, what can we do to make it more fun down there, or provide better services around food, maybe alcohol, whatever it is, right, to make it a more positive experience from a service perspective when they're there? And I don't know what that is, but I'm just wondering if you thought about innovating in a summer that's going to be tough.
Well, we do have events planned throughout the summer, several concerts, the concession, Kemper is coming back to provide the concessions, as well as the alcohol service again this year. You know, we do have some other activities, or equipment, I should say, that can be used by kids and families as well. But, you know, we are definitely looking at what we can do to kind of enlighten, or lighten the mood a little bit, because it is going to be a, it's going to be a trying summer, it's going, you know, you're going to have the people who are going to be upset with the way that it is. You know, to answer your question as far as number of permits, I can tell you that last year, or south lot totals I have, I don't, this doesn't have permits on it, but we had, in 2018, in the south lot, 24,032 vehicles. You know, 80, 200, whatever, on weekends, and 15,000 on the weekdays. We went into overflow, which is when the north end filled, and we had to move then cars to the south end, because that was the old, that was the practice, is once the north filled on the weekends, we used the south for overflow parking. We went into overflow parking 28 days on the holidays and weekends, and 11 during weekdays. So, you know, knowing that we were that busy, we're not going to have that this year. You know, the boating center was the second year. The boating center made $100, or $19,000 in revenue from people, you know, using the kayaks and the boats and the facilities that we have there. You know, I don't have the number of actual permits, I don't believe, maybe I do. Aaron left me a.
You're talking about boat permits, right?
You know, I'm talking about south parking access, right? The people that pay to get access there. And if there's, I mean, and again, I'm just trying to think creatively here on the fly, if there's capacity and there's no, this is just the weekends, but if, you know, if there's people and there's spots, maybe day pass.
And that's something that we definitely, we can monitor that. We plan to monitor the parking, and, you know, if there are changes that can be made, then I think that that gives us some opportunity to improve as we go. You know, you can't really predict the activity, standing, you know, here or in a room for the last three months, but what we have is what we feel is the most comprehensive way to do so. Also, our full-time staff are taking shifts at the lakefront memorial, the opening weekend, which is Memorial Day, so you'll see all of our full-time staff down there to help spread the word and help provide the, you know, like the smiles. And then throughout the summer, you'll see us down there as well, you know, helping out, and just being the support system that this facility is going to need.
Joe, is there anything? I was particularly struck by the phrase about the stress on the facility and the staff. And I know a lot of us, the staff is young, and it sounds like Jim has personal experience, maybe, I don't, my kids didn't, but I know a lot of our residents and their children have. What can we do to be supportive as council? Is there something that we can do? How can we get the word out that supporting the staff, especially the young staff at this time, is really important?
Well, I would say, you know, being stewards of what we're recommending, and if people ask, you know, helping explain why it's this way for now, and, you know, come down and visit the lakefront, and then always provide feedback or suggestions. You know, I think that's probably the most important, is, you know, making sure that, you know, the staff have not only our support, but all of your support as well when it comes to the operations, because you are right, that some of these 16, 17-year-old kids, they get verbally just, I mean, it's amazing what can, what adults can sometimes say to the kids down there. So, you know, I, you know, if we can ease the stresses of the facility through policies or procedures like this, that then will allow the staff to focus on what they're there for, and that's really the safety and the enjoyment of our resident, and, you know, not worry about the negativity, and let's focus on, you know, moving forward with the, with the support and the, you know, of the community as a whole.
Joe, would you review, please, the pedestrian access and the bicycle access, and where bikes might be locked up to access the beach?
Great, yeah, great. So bikes, we are looking at adding some bike racks up at the north, where the, what's the name of that?
Belvedere?
Yeah, the Belvedere, where the Belvedere is, so that they can come in through the path off of Deer Path and have a place to lock their bikes. And then pedestrian access will be down the Belvedere stairs. Now, there's going to be a construction fence along the entire park, so they'll be walking in the grass from the stairs to the pavilion to then access the lakefront there around the construction fence. The other access will be the south stairs, where all of the non-resident access is, is that south, and that's where the point of access is. So, you know, those are the two points of access as far as the stairs go, and we will be adding bikes. We're also looking at the possibility of adding some sort of storage or locker facilities down there, so that the residents can, you know, possibly at a nominal fee, rent a locker for the season and leave their things, so they don't have to haul that in to help ease and alleviate some of the traffic problems. So we're looking into all of those amenities as we speak right now.
Thank you.
Last year, we permitted parking east of Sheridan Road on all those streets coming into Lake Road. This year, that's not going to be possible. Are you going to put additional no-parking signs around? Because people have said, well, I parked here last year. I'm just assuming I can park here again this year.
Yes, we're going to work with police and streets to make sure that the properties around there are all signed and very clear, because we don't want that to become a problem for the neighbors that are already dealing with a construction project, and now you're going to have additional, you know, so yes, we will be signing some of that as well.
Okay. And one more question, and maybe before we finish this topic, we can get Director Thomas to come up and just give us a brief overview of where we're at on the project for the North Beach Access Road, just a quick summary of.
I had another comment before.
Please.
Go ahead, Aldrin.
I wanted to, one comment.
Just a sec, you, just a sec, right, yeah, you were right.
Okay, all right. I just was looking at the two golf carts and wondering if you might have an additional golf cart in reserve for especially busy weekends.
Those golf carts are six-passenger instead of four, so the two that we have is what we used last year, and it worked just fine. If we do need an additional, we'll work through our vendor, and we can add that as we need to, but the two we had last year, there was, wasn't really a need for a third, even on the busy, busiest days. A lot of people, believe it or not, didn't mind the walk from the south to the north, you know, but the two did suffice, but no, that's definitely something that, a second shuttle bus, if we find that the one isn't sufficient, I mean, there's, all of this is kind of.
And this is just.
And this is just a rental price, right? We're not.
No, that's a rental price for the, basically the three months of operation.
Okay.
Right, please.
Thank you. Going to Alderman, Alderman Biedler's point, maybe one of the things that the council can do at our upcoming ward meetings, and I was thinking we would do that at the fourth, is not only give an update to the construction work, but an update, as Joe has done, to the operational aspects of the beach and encourage the folks to be civil, polite and, you know, work with the folks because they've, you know, done a great job in, in considering all the different options, thinking through the process. And I think if the council can pass that along at our ward meetings, that would be a very positive thing.
I think that's a great idea. And any materials that there are, any of the, you know, anything that we can hand out.
Right.
I mean, I think this is, I think all belt and suspenders as far as communication. Let's just make sure people are like, oh, my gosh, not again. We've heard about this 14 times. Let's just make sure everybody hears about.
And I think that's the most important aspect is the communication and the marketing of what we're doing.
Right.
If we can alleviate a lot of that now, it makes the summer that much easier.
You bet.
Joe, in terms of the, the weekdays, you mentioned that we have the 36 trailer spaces and you're going to monitor that, possibly provide car parking, which I would assume would be two per space you can get in there. What's been your experience in terms of weekday usage of those 36 trailer spots by the boaters? Is it something that they seldom fill up that you could expect to have spaces available on weekdays or, or not?
During the week, there is less use by the boaters. You know, the weekends are the hot times where they're wanting to come down.
And obviously, it's weather dependent too.
Yeah. And we do have, I mean, there is a small, or there is a, a number of people that come down almost daily. But I do feel in talking to Aaron and the, and the staff down there that there will be opportunity to, you know, open up some of those for additional cars on the weekends.
And on that point, I guess I would encourage you folks to be very sensitive to that because if we have people that are being forced to, to bust or say there's no space down there and they get down there and see half the trailer space is empty. So if you can use them and maximize that opportunity, I think that would be, be great from several different standpoints. In terms of staff parking, is there any feasibility of utilizing Forest Park Drive or the lake, you know, part of lake that's closed off north of Deer Path that doesn't interfere with construction, obviously, but they can open it up at least for staff to, to park there and get in and out?
So we, we did look at the ring road. The, the construction area north of Deer Path isn't an option because of exactly that. They're going to be parking their vehicles and there's not going to be enough room for that. We did look at the ring road as a possibility. One issue was, you know, the in and out of the same angle. But what you're going to find is once we start parking even one staff car, then there's going to be expectation that it's going to become resident. And some people will go right around whatever we have and, and park there on their own. So.
Keep our police busy.
You know, so we want to make sure that, you know, that area.
I, I assume it wasn't feasible, but I just saw all that space. Maybe we could get them and not fill up the South Lot.
We took a lot of time with a lot of departments discussing that. And it just, we felt that after that project to redo and redesign and rebuild that, that it probably wasn't the best option.
You, you mentioned another option where people could, I assumed you meant drive all the way down to drop people off and come back. And I think that would be a great idea to the extent, you know, you have the beach equipment and all that good stuff, you could drop off. But that's going to be a policing problem that, all I'm going to do is drop them off and three hours later he comes back up.
We've got staff scheduled in those areas to make sure we can watch that and keep an eye on that.
Okay. But because it'd be good to do, I think, and just as long as it's not abused.
Yep.
Last comment is to Parks and Recs. Thank you very much. We recognize that this is a very challenging, trying summer, more than you've experienced in the past. We didn't intend to give you this much of a, a challenge, but the effort you're putting in is most appreciated and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe, and I, I would, I wish I wasn't planning to follow that because I, I think that says it all in terms of our, our appreciation to your department for doing this, all this extra work. Would you just remind me how much a permit, I should know this because, but my husband takes care of this for us to have a permit for the kayak. It's not very much my, how much is that permit?
A South parking permit, and I actually have that.
Now, let's just clarify, this isn't for a boat. This is to be able to go down there.
This is just, this is just for a car.
But you don't even have to have a kayak, which you almost never use.
This is a South, a South Beach parking permit for this season is, for a resident is $114.
I think I heard you say $114. What a bargain. Do we, now, is there a maximum of those or do we sell them until we sell out? I mean, or maybe we never sell out.
We haven't had that issue in the past, so we've just sold.
I'm just saying, if you're a regular weekend user of the beach, does it maybe make sense to get that $114 sticker and not have to worry? Just a thought.
I was thinking.
I'm not confusing this. This is actually a possibility, right?
I was thinking maybe we ought to take a price of this.
I know, I know. Welcome home.
All right, listen.
Can we get Director Thomas to give us a?
Not yet.
Okay.
May I bring it back here? Unless there's any more new questions, I think it would be appropriate at this point to ask, is there any comment from the audience regarding this operational proposal for the beach? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the 2019 lakefront operating procedures?
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Biedler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Joe, thank you. Great job. Ad hoc, Mike Thomas, always ready, 24/7, Director of Public Works. It's cleaned up down there, I noticed.
There's snows gone.
We didn't have to plow it yesterday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we'll give just a very brief presentation on the status of the bluff project. Before we see the semis come, which that is where we are at now, there is a whole lot of work that had to be done up to that point. And that basically took from the time city council approved the project to last week. To begin with, the contracts, we had to execute the contracts, pass the insurance and bonds. We had our pre-construction meeting with all the parties involved, various departments here with the city. We had an IAPA and an IDNR permit that we needed to obtain before we could move an ounce of dirt. The public hearing or the public comment period ended March 28th on that. So then we needed to wait a week for them to gather all their information. But the bottom line, we have permits for both, which is good news. The contractors submitted all those critical path submittals, meaning when they buy pipe, they need to have that pipe specification reviewed and approved by the engineer. So they, they submit what we call submittals. The engineer reviews them, approves them and says, yes, go ahead and buy that piece of pipe. That is all done. All the site fencing has been completed. They've brought down all of their heavy equipment. The traffic control signage has been brought down as well. We are not going to start putting up those barricades until we know the semis are rolling, but it's going to be very soon. They established perimeter erosion control protection, the silt fencing, and then GPS base station and their initial site survey. So we have a very, very detailed GPS survey of the entire site. That has been completed. And then they did their final prep last week to start bringing in the CA6. So I spoke with the contractor today and he said this first two or three layers, they're going to be going up in 12-inch increments. It's very important. They've got to go on dry ground. So we're going to be getting rain here the next couple of days. That is the challenge with the springtime. But as soon as we can have some dry weather, all of this stuff is done, we're ready to have the, the semis roll. Just some additional pictures from down on the parking lot, somewhat difficult to see, but again, you see all the erosion control and some of their equipment, the fencing. The picture on the far right bottom, actually is the neighbor's property. They are, the McDonnas are working with the contractor that the city has hired, Keno Construction. Their soldier pile wall, the, all of the, the steel has been installed and they're going to start bringing in the panels this week and then they'll start doing the tiebacks as well. Bottom line, that project is going very well. That's going to get wrapped up and it needs to get wrapped up because 1,700 semis of CA6, it's going to be a lot of material, a lot of equipment. So that is where we are at. So far, so good.
Great. Well, thank you. Pray for sunshine, right?
Amen.
Thank you. Moving on, next item, Business Committee reports. Alderman Morris, Finance Committee Chair.
Thank you. As we have in the past, we've gotten an award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And we are very happy to see this. We have such a, an excellent financial department. And in their news release, they noted that the city's financial reporting has been judged as an important, by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure and clear communication of its financial story and motivation of potential users and user groups to read the financial report. So this is the 40th consecutive year of financial awards for the city. So it's really very impressive. Along that line, they also have given us an award of financial achievement reporting for an individual as instrumental in our achievement of the certificate. So I'm pleased to present this award to Diane Hall, our Assistant Director of Finance. Diane has served as the primary liaison to the city's independent audit firm, Baker Tilly. She coordinates the annual audit process in preparation of the financial report.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Next item is approval of the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan for fiscal year 2020 to be presented by Alderman Morris and Elizabeth Hollen.
Well, I'm going to pass that responsibly over to our Finance Director, Elizabeth Hollen.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. My first note is I'd like to recognize and acknowledge my appreciation for the IT staff who got our AV system back up and running this evening, under pressure. So that's great. Why do we call it the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan? I get that question more than you'd imagine. The reason why this isn't called the budget is because there's a lot more information in the document you're approving this evening. It does include the annual budget for the fiscal year 20, but it also includes a five-year capital improvement program. It includes long-term financial forecasts for primary funds. It provides a lot of trend and additional financial information and a lot of information on personnel. So the document, while it is the budget, it is more than the budget and provides a real, good overview of the city's financial condition and plan for the next year. I'm really pleased this year that we had the proposed budget on the website for a week. We posted that on the website last Monday. I don't know that the city's ever done that before, but I think as we continue to try to improve and look for other ways for financial transparency, we thought that was important. So that document has been on the city's website for a week for public review prior to your consideration of that this evening. It has been a really long process. We look at this, this graphic every year, but it really is a good reminder of just the fact that you, as a body, both with the Finance Committee and City Council, are working on financial planning all year. So our, our fiscal year begins on May 1st, ends on April 30th. So we are ending one fiscal year and spending the summer wrapping up that fiscal year end and preparing the comprehensive annual financial report that was just recognized under the leadership of Diane Hall. And then in September, we're already moving into the budget planning process for the next year. So you're really working on the budget for eight months out of each year. We start out with some overarching guiding principles and policies and then we move right into revenues and capital. And then the Finance Committee meets in November to review recommendations and planning for both revenues, the tax levy and the five-year capital improvement program. And then we begin working on the operating budget. And we build the operating budget in response to the revenues available. So we, we estimate the revenues first and then we build a budget within the revenue available to us. And so departments begin working in January on preparing their operating budget submittals. Those are reviewed and summarized in February and come to the Finance Committee in March for a comprehensive review on the operating budget side as well as any outstanding issues for capital or revenue. So we are here this evening in April to kind of review the culmination of that eight months' work and bring to you the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan for Approval. Some highlights of the budget portion of the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan, the total FY20 budget estimates $90.47 million in revenue and $88.7 million in expenses. That's citywide, including all operating and capital costs. The expenses reflect a $1.65 million decrease or a 1.19% decrease compared to the estimated actual expenses for the current fiscal year. We have a fiscal year 20 capital program initiative of $7.2 million. And we have included both a sanitation fee and a sales tax increase that have recently been approved to fund additional recurring capital costs. Some of the notable projects, you've already talked a bit about the North Beach Access Road bluff repairs. We have over $2 million budgeted for that in FY20. Annual street overlay and repairs of $950,000. Storm sewer upgrade, Old Elm Timber to Grain Bay, this is on your agenda this evening, budgeted for $920,000. Other street improvements, patching repairs for $408,000 and additional storm sewer improvements of $330,000. That is just the significant projects. And included in the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan is a detailed itemized listing of all the, the capital projects approved. So the fiscal year 20 revenue is $90.47 million. You can see on the right here, the, the categories and amounts with a pie chart to the left. As you know, we are significantly reliant on property taxes in Lake Forest to fund the budget. So that is the most significant revenue source in the budget. But you can see that the second most significant in quantity and percentage is charges for services. So that would include all of the water and sanitary sewer charges, sanitation fee, all of those charges for services provided by the city throughout the year. Other financing sources noted on the previous page was $12.6 million of the total of other financing sources. That tends to be one that generally draws some interest. So I've broken that further down here on this slide with what that $12.6 million is made up of. I would note that near the bottom, there's an inter-fund transfer line item of $3.86 million. That is just to address transfers between funds. It's not an inflow of resources and you see a similar transfer out on the expense side. But it is just addressing the fund accounting that we are required to report under for, as a governmental entity. Looking at the FY2020 expenditures, again, that's total citywide of $88.7 million. The majority of that, about 50% citywide, but you'll see on a later slide, 71% in the general fund is personnel. Salaries and employment benefits of city employees is a significant portion. Capital outlay there is $11.9 million. It's higher than on the previous slide because it includes miscellaneous capital and operating budgets. And then insurance of $8.5 million. So those are the significant by category expenses included in the $88.7 million budget. The next slide looks at the expenses by department. So you see the same. So you see the same $88.7 million, but allocated in this pie chart by department. And one thing you'll note is the non-department, which is at the bottom of the pie chart, is then itemized to the right to show what non-departmental expenses are. Those are simply not specific to a particular operating department. So it's included in a different category. And there you see the same line of inter-fund transfers out of $3.8 million. Again, not outflows of resources, but transfers between funds. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. It accounts for the primary operations of the city and includes the majority of city employees. And here you just see a snapshot of the general fund revenue and general fund expenses by category, just noting that property tax is the majority revenue source at 52% in the general fund. And then the personnel is 71%. Salaries and benefits of the general fund expense budget. As part of the annual budget process, the city does financial forecasting in a number of its primary operating funds. We typically do five years. A few years ago, we began developing a 10-year forecast for the general fund that we do review in the March Budget Workshop. Here, I've just included the most recent actual year that's completed, FY '8, the current projection for our current fiscal year '19, and then five years, the FY '20 budget, through projections for '21 through '24. A few items to note on this fund balance forecast. The city made some significant changes in 2006 to 2008 to address the national economic decline and reductions in revenues. The city offered an early retirement incentive and through that significantly reduced personnel, and since then have continued to look for opportunities for savings by contracting out, outsourcing, or consolidating operations with other communities, as the city did with Glenview for dispatch services. So what we have found in recent years is as the revenues have begun to rebound, the city has been very vigilant in not adding back programs and not adding back personnel. And so I would just bring your attention to FY '18 and FY '19. And what we've seen is some significant budget surpluses in the general fund. Over $4 million actual for FY '18 and projected at $4 million for '19. Now, some of that is one-time revenue coming in above budget estimates. So for example, in FY '19, we're projecting building permits alone to come $1 million in $1 million over budget. We've also seen increases in interest rates, and we've also seen the benefit of conservative budgeting. So whereas the city budgeted in FY '19 income tax collections at 90%, reflecting what the state had done in '18, the state actually reduced income tax distributions by only 5%. So we see some additional budget, positive budget variance on that side. On the expense side, the city has traditionally budgeted employees fully for the year. So although we're naturally going to have some turnover over the course of the year, the budgeted expenses are conservative in budgeting all personnel and benefits for a full 12-month. So we typically see salary vacancy savings from the natural turnover of employees throughout the year. So all of that contributes to those net positive budget surpluses, but has certainly helped to bolster the reserves in the general fund. Given concerns with the state and its potential impact on the city's budget, that has been deemed by the Finance Committee to be prudent and to retain those fund balance reserves. However, we are taking advantage of that by transferring some of those reserves over to capital expenses. And so in '18, $1.2 million in fund balance reserves were transferred to capital to fund the ERP, the financial software implementation. And then also in '19, based on Finance Committee discussion at the March Budget Meeting, whereas the city had only budgeted a $1 million transfer to capital, we're instead going to make that 2.6, taking advantage of the strong budget surplus we're forecasting for the year. And then in '20, the FY '20 budget includes an additional transfer of $1.5 million. Similarly, on the capital improvement fund side, just some items to note, we do a similar five-year forecast. The capital improvement fund is the fund that includes most capital improvements for general operations. It includes streets. It includes technology. It includes capital equipment replacement, storm sewers, water and sanitary sewers included in the water capital fund, but the storm sewers are included in the capital improvement fund. Many of those expenses are recurring in nature. While they're capital-related, they're expected to occur every single year. So we have $300,000 budgeted for building maintenance, typically about $1 million in road resurfacing, $450,000 in capital equipment. But those amounts are not expected to change from year to year, and so we have worked to fund those from ongoing revenue sources. One change in FY '20 related to the sanitation fee, in order to more align that revenue source with the operations budget for sanitation, we've moved the sanitation fee to the general fund, but moved an equal amount of property taxes from the general fund to the capital fund. And then in addition, the second half percent home rule sales tax. So earlier this year, the City Council approved an increase in the home rule sales tax rate from half a percent to 1%. So that second half a percent is budgeted in the capital improvement fund, again, as an ongoing revenue source for capital improvement programming. So what that's allowed us to do is increase the $3.3 million per year to $4.2 million. So an obvious question is why increase taxes and fees when general fund reserves exist? And that has been a subject of a lot of discussion by the Finance Committee over this budget process. And I would note two particular reasons. One, as we mentioned on the previous slide, the ongoing nature of capital improvement programs, of the capital improvement program. I would note that some would argue that it's more maintenance than capital because it is ongoing in nature and it is not expanding capacity. It's not improving the streets. For example, if there's no curb and gutter, we're just replacing it with no curb and gutter. So this is really maintenance of the infrastructure. And so that should be funded from ongoing revenue sources. The second is the unknown impacts of the state. I know we've talked about this for several years, but the state is in no better financial condition than it was a few years ago. And they do continue to talk about reducing state shared revenues to local governments or imposing a property tax freeze or significant property tax limitations on local government. So that has been one reason why the city has, over time, increased its fund reserves and continues to maintain that so that we can proactively or not reactively address any state impacts. I would note the challenge for us is that the state fiscal year is July 1 to June 30. So their budget approval comes after ours. And so we've had years in which we've had to respond to changes included in the state-approved budget that weren't anticipated in the city's budget. Just one more note on the sales tax increase. Again, it is effective July 1st, so we will only see 10 months of additional revenue in '20. But as part of the review and consideration of the home rule sales tax increase, we did look at our neighbors, our neighboring communities. And I would note that the sales tax rates are denoted with the color, but those communities that have dots in their boundaries, they are imposing local food and beverage taxes, locally imposed and locally administered taxes on food and beverage in addition to the sales tax. So we have assured ourselves that Lake Forest will remain competitive with its neighbors even after this sales tax increase. One other note is public safety pension funding. We've talked about this for a couple of years, but I think it's still noteworthy to note that this graph on the left, red is fire, blue is police. This was a schedule that we looked at a few years ago. We looked at actual public safety pension costs from FY '5 to FY '16 and what we were forecasting for the FY '17 budget and what, based on the state funding guidelines, would happen to the city's requirements over time. I would note that this chart only goes to 2027 with the state model. Those increases would keep going up until 2040. So it simply isn't fiscally sustainable for local governments to continue to fund public safety pension in this manner. And so the city has developed an alternate strategy. It was first implemented in the current fiscal year. This was the first year. We looked at making some changes to actuarial assumptions, and we took that blue line, which is total public safety costs, and we bent it to more flatline that and reduce the ramp of annual increases going forward. It did require an $800,000 increase to public safety pension funding in FY '19, but it is like, you know, increasing a payment on your house. You're going to pay off that quicker, and you're going to save interest over time. The long-term strategy incorporates additional changes to public safety pension funding. This is, again, on your agenda this evening for consideration. But what the green line does is it actually moves a fixed funding target at a particular year to an open or rolling amortization period. It does not achieve 100% funding, but no pension plan is going to reach that under current state guidelines. But what it does do is it tempers and almost flatlines or reduces the contribution requirements. While the city recognizes that we can't make that change immediately because of the significant increase in requirements, the plan is to phase that in when that red line and green line are closer together. The last schedule is, this is the cost to an average Lake Forest home. We update this every year. The yellow highlights under '20 are the numbers that are changing in the FY '20 proposed budget. It will show an average $800,000 home, what they pay on property taxes, and other taxes for general city services. As you can see, the property tax does increase for '20, as does the water rates and the sanitation fee. So the water rates are important because the water and sanitary sewer utility is fully self-supporting. It does not receive any tax revenue to support its operations, and it must have rates able to fund both the operating and capital costs of the utility. So the city has done an inflation adjustment to water rates each year to keep pace with the needs and the ongoing funding requirements for the water and sanitary sewer utility. The sanitation fee, as mentioned earlier, is going to increase May 1st, 2019. It will increase from $8 a month to $12 a month. Again, that's still for two times a week garbage collection for all single-family residences. It's a very, very competitive rate when you look at other communities and what they charge for sanitation. So that does provide $300,000 in additional revenue per year. That is, again, while it's going to the general fund, it allowed for $300,000 in additional property taxes to be directed to the capital improvement program. I've put a red box around those four lines because all of those fees are assessed on the quarterly utility bill. So that is something that has changed over time. The sanitation fee began, I think, May 1st of 2013. And then the public safety pension fee was added as an additional funding source for public safety pensions in fiscal year '18, and it was placed on the utility bill to increase public awareness of the public safety pension issues. So overall, for an average household, the proposed budget for general revenues would increase about $148 for the year. Just a note, the city has a financial transparency section of its website. You can go to the homepage of the City of Lake Forest, go to the quick links, and select financial transparency. We redesigned this in January. You now have additional information available at this section of the website, including a full section on pensions, providing a lot of historical information regarding public safety pension funding and overall pension funding for the city and our strategy in meeting those obligations. In summary, the current financial condition of the city is excellent. The city continues to have healthy fund balance reserves. The city carries a AAA bond rating, which is the highest bond rating achievable from the credit rating agencies. Residents of Lake Forest continue to enjoy the lowest property tax rate in Lake County. The FY '20 budget is balanced and also includes long-term forecasting to ensure that we know what decisions made today, how that affects the long-term financial condition of the city. The two significant long-term financial challenges have not changed for several years. One is the state fiscal condition and how that might impact the city's budget going forward. And finally, the fact that expense growth in general outpaces revenue growth. The revenue growth in the city is about 2% to 2.2% per year, with expenses about 3.8% to 4% per year, largely driven by personnel costs, with significant inflation in both the pension and medical insurance categories. So our recommendation for the City Council is approval of the FY '20 Comprehensive Fiscal Plan, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Open up for questions.
We've all been at this for some months, touching it almost every month, one aspect of this fiscal plan preparation. So I think we're on council here, ready to fall over the finish line.
Well, if there are no questions, I would encourage any of the citizens who are watching this to go out to the website because the Finance Department, with its new financial systems, ERP systems, has put a tremendous amount of financial information out there that's all accessible in a self-service type of format with both graphs and drill-down capability to see just about any kind of expense or combination of expenses and revenues. So I highly encourage people, if they have a question, to go out and take advantage of that.
Yeah, very, it is. It's robust and only going to get better as ERP digs in more and more. There's no more particular questions or comments from council. Is there any comments from the audience? I think Dennis, you had a thought you wanted to relate.
Actually, a couple. Do you want me to go out there?
Please, if you would, Dennis.
Dennis Mollmans, 1100 Sir William in Lake Forest. And I want to thank several people, Ray and Jed, for an initial meeting, and Elizabeth for spending time with me last week. And I think this budget's really good. I like what I see. You're putting, although the first time I read it, I said they're not putting any more capital, they're actually decreasing the capital expenditure, but then Elizabeth said there's this rollover stuff. But I do have a couple of thoughts, and Elizabeth, I'd like you to comment on the first one. If you turn to page 44, this is, or maybe we can do it up there. This is the general fund. Roll forward. Maybe you can't. This is a suggestion. The general fund has been building this fund balance for several years, and I know it's all in capital and investments. And if you look at the net before CIP, you had $4.5 million last year, about $4 million this year, projecting 2.4, and you transferred money out of there into the capital. I might suggest you transfer all the excess in this fund into your capital count because you're still not funding enough capital. You've got a 30% overrun already on this Forest Hill project, so that $16 million estimate of putting in new sewers is probably more like 25 or 30, especially if it goes out to 2040. So I really think you should take this capital. I don't know, this is your determination. I don't know how much you need, but you sure don't need 79% of your revenue retained in cash and investments in this fund. The state will never obliterate 79%. Think about it. They'd have to say you have no property taxes. They'd have to say you have no property taxes coming in this year for that to happen. So I would suggest you could make a significant dent in your capital needs by transferring that excess. I didn't calculate it in my head. It's probably about 5 million. And then for 2020, I'm not saying commit to that, other than the 1.5 now, but if you come in at 2.4 next year at this time, or at 3, or whatever, move it all out. Now, Elizabeth, I'm going to ask you to tell me, is that a good or a bad idea?
I think it's a great idea, but I would just preface it with a couple comments. So we did talk at the March Budget Workshop about the fact that '19 was going to come in better than we projected. And I think the March Budget Meeting is the best time to make that discussion because you're, or make that decision. You're almost 11 months through of the fiscal year. You know anything you need to know about the state's impact that year. And you know where revenues or expenses are coming in above or below budget. And so we have a really good number. So I think in March, as part of that budget meeting, increasing it just as we did this March from 1 million to 2.6 is a very good strategy. I only get concerned about FY '20 simply because of the unknowns and you don't know the state, but you could certainly budget the 1.5. You know you're going to come back in March and take any excess or additional surplus and divert that or transfer it over to the capital fund. Going backwards, sometimes that can be seen as a reduction in fund balance, which kinds of messes up the rating criteria, but I'm sure we could explain it to Moody's as to what we've done. But no, I think Dennis, we actually had this conversation on Monday, on Friday, and I do think that that's, as a look back near the end of the fiscal year, I think that's an absolutely great idea.
Which has kind of become the practice in recent years. You know, we have these known unknowns, and some of them are very scary, property tax raises and that sort of thing. And then there's the unknown unknowns, where you really need to reserve money. So it's a room full of reasonable people could disagree as to the amount, but directionally, no, we don't need to put every, you know, like a squirrel, put every nut away forever. We certainly can draw on that pool of funds as the various assessments of our capital needs are reviewed every year.
And I'd ask that you consider that. That would put 5 million into your capital improvement fund, and you might be able to pick off the next couple of storm sewer projects and get that, hopefully they'll come in more in line with that initial estimate, but you'd be able to take that 15 or 16 million target down to maybe 10. Now, a second idea. Can you move this to the, oh, you don't have that one.
Capital.
Ah, yeah, move it to the capital. A second idea on the capital fund, you can see that you've got the, I'll look at mine. You've got the revenue coming in from the half a percent from the home rule, coming in at 500,000 next year and 618 the year following. I suggested this when you first talked about putting this through. You might think about issuing some bonds, like you did when you first put in that half a percent, which generated about 10 million. There's about 2.7 left to be paid off. You might do a bond offering, say in the $20 million range, prepay that 2.7. You're left with 17 million, and you can get that whole sewer project thing done, and that would pay this off over roughly 10 years. You're going to save it on your cost of construction. The interest is going to get either paid, you pay it now or you pay it out in the future in increased construction costs. Other than that, I thought you did a great job with it, and I compliment Elizabeth for her efforts. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your interest and spending the time on it. These are all good points and lots of estimations and judgments along the way as to how to proceed, but we'll definitely keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Both of those. Jed, please.
Right. So we've had lots of conversations with Dennis, and I just want to thank him. It's been an enjoyable experience, frankly, because he's the first, I guess, resident has drilled as deeply and as thoroughly into our financial information as he has and has offered up these ideas, which they have some merit, and I think we'll be talking about them. But it's been a good exercise from my standpoint and from Elizabeth's standpoint, so thanks.
Well, thank you. And I, sorry, I did have one other idea. You have a five-year forecast, but you don't have a five-year capital plan or a 10-year capital plan. You don't have a plan that said, we've got all this storm sewer stuff, which I thought it was going to set for a 100-year flood, but it's only a 10-year flood according to the memo I read today. You've got that, and you've got the library. I would suggest that you step back and say, how do we fund these over a reasonable period using some debt, using some fund balance transfer? And I'll volunteer to help.
Well, thank you. We are on exactly that course with respect to the unknowns of the library at this time, although work needs to be done. And there is a longer-term view than just five years on capital. At the departmental level, particularly in Public Works, there's outlooks that go out actually 20 years. It's not as categorized and as tight as we have it in the budget here, but there's a lot of thinking that goes out many years.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you, Dennis.
I think in the bond issue, don't we have to watch our bonding capacity too and balance that against our ratings?
Yeah, it's a very.
The balancing act with issuing bonds.
With that, any other citizens wish to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back and ask for a motion to approve the comprehensive fiscal plan for fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Second. The roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the annual vendor approval. There's a number of actions here remaining tonight that really all flow from the adoption of the 2020 budget essentially kicking off spending the money. Elizabeth, are you taking us through this?
I will, just briefly. So beginning in 2011, the city amended its code regarding approval of vendors and created a category of vendors for whom provide services on an ongoing basis to the city that in aggregate are expected to exceed $20,000 in any given year, and created this opportunity to have those vendors approved at the beginning of each fiscal year by the city council. So beginning on page 27 of your packet, you have the list. We've been asked in prior years to give you some historical context. So this year, we've given you the four previous years, 16 through 19, as well as the requests from departments for 2020. So if you don't see an amount listed for that particular vendor in '20, they're not an ongoing vendor for us, but you can see when they've been approved in the past. So the recommendation would be to simply have the city council approve this list of recommended vendors for FY '20.
So moved.
Second.
This is a, first of all, before we do that, is there anyone in the audience that has a question about the vendor list for 2020? If not, we'll observe the motion and the second, and it's a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of revisions to the city's pension funding policy, presented by Elizabeth Hollis once again and Alderman Morris.
Yeah, just to start, a couple of comments, just because this has gone on in this discussion for quite a long time, but I look back at the, no, this started in 2015 when the city council first adopted a pension funding policy. And then in 2016, we began discussing our plan with Foster and Foster as an actuary of what options we might have. And that discussion continued all the way through 2017, as we looked at different models, different ways of doing the funding, culminating in last year, in 2018, with the revisions to the pension funding policy. So we'll continue to do this through that point, 2022, where that inflection point occurs. And we'll keep monitoring this to make sure that we're on the path that we.
That's an excellent point. We labor in the vineyard, and actually, a lot has been achieved on this very difficult issue. Elizabeth.
So I just want to share this slide. I was not able to share during the finance committee discussion on the same topic, but this shows the city's strategy for public safety pension funding since April 30 of 2012. So it provides kind of the significant actuarial assumptions and policy guidelines and directions that have been used, with the red indicating a change in a particular year. So you can see at 43012, we were using a 7.5% investment and return assumption, a 1971 mortality table, and other things. And then you can see that was resulting in city funding of $2.6 million for that year. So the next year, you see the one change that the city made was updating the mortality table to a 2,000 mortality table, recognizing that people were living longer and so they were receiving pensions for a longer time. That has an increase on the unfunded liability. Everything else remained the same. And you can see in those years, we were still using the 100% funding by 2033. And that was a closed amortization period. So that funding went up to 2.9 million that year. For April 30, 14, we reduced the investment return assumption from 7.5% to 7%. That similarly increases the unfunded liability because you're not assuming that your assets are going to be generating enough interest income going forward. And so that resulted in a change in funding to 3.0 million, 3.0 million. For 43015 and 16, both of those years, the only changes was a further update of the mortality table. And in 15, the city began funding based on the statutory guidelines of 2040. So given all the other changes, the city simply couldn't continue to manage the 2033 deadline, so we moved to 100% funding by 2040. And then you can see the contribution requirements of 3.1 and 3.4 million in those years. 43017 was the game changer. And those were the significant changes that we made. We brought on a different actuary. We began having significant discussions about the fiscal sustainability of public safety pension funding in Illinois. So we made a number of changes. We adjusted the mortality table. We went with a service-based assumption under the salary scale, and the payroll growth generated a lot of conversation because the previous actuary was using the 5.5% salary scale for payroll growth as well. And we did not fully appreciate that that 5.5% was building in an automatic 5.5% increase in the amortization of the unfunded liability each year to keep the level percentage of pay. And so after several discussions, we reduced that payroll growth assumption from 5.5% to 2.0, and that significantly brought the ramp down for funding ongoing, but it required a significant increase in funding in year one. So that increased the funding requirement from 3.4 million to 4.2 million, so that was the $800,000 increase. There's a two-year lag between the actuarial valuation date and the fiscal year, so the 43017 actuarial valuation is the FY '19 budget. So that was the $800,000 increase we spoke to previously. 43018, we left everything the same. And so it just gives you an idea of just how long, as Alderman Morris said, we've been at this conversation. So these are duplicates of the budget presentation, what we were looking at, what we changed in FY '19, and bringing that ramp down on the funding requirements. And then again, the concept of open amortization. So the city has been talking for about a year and a half about moving away from a closed amortization period to an open or rolling amortization period. What that means is you're amortizing your unfunded liability over 15 years, but every year. So the next year, you amortize that over 15 years. What it does is it never gets you to 100% funding, but it gets you in the 80% to 85% range, which is very, very conservative from a long-term pension funding perspective. But you can see what it does to the contributions. We could not do that immediately, do the significant increase in funding, but based on our modeling for future years, we do think there will be a point at which our current red line is close to the green line, and that would be the opportunity to phase that open amortization period in. And so the pension funding policy before you simply acknowledges that the city's intent would be to phase in an open amortization period when those lines crossed, and it became an opportune time to do that. And again, it also recognizes that the city would still be bound to the state minimum contribution requirement and acknowledges that regardless of what the state is requiring, the city at a minimum would be required to fund the state minimum contribution. But under this policy, the contribution requirements with this pension funding policy would always be above the state minimum requirement.
So moved.
Very good summary, Elizabeth. Again, have we spent any more time on any other subject, even the North Beach access road than this one? So first of all, before we get to motions, is there any comment from anyone in the audience on this particular section? Seeing none, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
To do this. So roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is resolution in support of State Senate Bill 1111 and House Bill 1571, to be presented by Alderman Morris.
Thank you. And I'll include Alderman Newman, who's part of the pension subcommittee, but we've noticed in Springfield, probably half a dozen different bills being proposed that are actually crazy about how to deal with pensions at the state level.
Yes.
And so after reading those, analyzing them, and looking at those, we felt it was important for the city to make a statement about one of those, which is this combination of Senate Bill 1111 and House Bill 1571. So we drafted a resolution for the council to consider, but Alderman Newman, any comments on that?
This is a very, very minor step in consolidating the investment operation of over 600 separately-managed public safety pensions. How this didn't get done earlier than this is beyond us, but it's probably the least important step in pension, public pension reform, but got to start somewhere.
So this is a small step, but we recommend the city council, who own the record, as supporting these two bills.
Yes, and along the lines of our discussion earlier this evening in Finance Committee, is there any comment from the audience regarding this proposal? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for motion from the council to, for.
So moved.
Resolution in support of these two bills. So roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
If I may make a point of clarification, that did include the suggested revision offered by Alderman Bushman in the Finance Committee session.
For sure.
Yes.
That's what I meant with along the lines.
Along the lines.
Okay, well, thank you. Next item, businesses, opportunity for citizens to address council on non-agenda items. Is anyone here present to do that? No, not. No, not seeing anyone. I'll move to the next item, which are items for omnibus vote consideration, and as I said earlier, a lot of these have to do with initiating the fiscal year 2020 budget and related expenditures.
Mr. Mayor, you may go down in history as king of the omnibus.
Everybody has to be known for something.
I'm told these need to be read out a lot, so we're going to do this. This will also be the last time I will be doing this. I just want you to know that. First omnibus vote consideration is approval of the April 1st, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Second is consideration of approval only of executive session minutes to include the dates of April 16th and 18th, May 30th. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute.
You're right, you're right.
Include the dates of, yeah, April 16, 2018, May 30, 2018, June the 4th, 2018, June the 18th, 2018, July the 2nd, 2018, September the 4th, 2018, and March the 18th, 2019. Third is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions. Fourth is approval of North Suburban Special Recreation Association Resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain property. Five, approval of Rite Benefit Strategies Benefit Consulting Services for fiscal year 2020. Six, approval of a resolution reallocating the 2019 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. Number seven, authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement with Williams Shellhouse Media Services LLC in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for professional services related to the operation of the city's public, educational, and governmental cable television services. Number eight, approval of the Public Works Committee recommendation to award a bid for the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the Old Elm Stewer and Forest Hill Water Main project to Boulder Contractors in the amount of one million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. In addition, a ten percent contingency is requested for any unforeseen construction issues that may arise during the project. Number nine, approval to extend the 2018 sanitary sewer inflow infiltration testing program bid pricing to RJN Group in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Award of bid to Hare Construction for the annual sewer lining program in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Eleven, approval of a resolution to adopt the Displanes River watershed-based plan. Twelve, approval of a three-year professional services agreement for the city surveyor and engineer to Gwalt Hamilton in an estimated amount of forty-three thousand dollars. Thirteen, approval of a three-year commitment to provide financial and in-kind staffing support to the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars per year. Fourteen, authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract with Brainstorm in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars for professional services related to the implementation of the community marketing plan continuation in fiscal year 2020. As we have done before, if there's any item a council member would like removed or considered separately, we can do that. Short of that, are there any particular questions or comments about these items?
I had a question about a couple of items.
Please, yes.
Item number five, which is the Rite contract, I just didn't see where, anything about whether it was bid out or waived, if the bidding process was waived on it. I just didn't see that.
Well, it's a continuation of a contract that goes back many years, but...
Sure, and I'd actually ask Human Resources Director, Dasha Kalmar, to answer that question.
Yeah, this is, he's our benefits consultant. He's, it's a professional services contract. We haven't bid it because he does certain things for us that most consultants wouldn't provide, some of the services that he provides for us. It hasn't been increased since the first time it went up, nine hundred dollars, first time it's been increased for a number of years, so.
So, because it's a professional services contract, we don't generally bid these out? Is that accurate?
Not all the time, no.
Yeah, well, I think he's been of great value to...
Yeah, this isn't really something that would be, you wouldn't want to be bidding this every so often. I mean, the gentleman is kind of, it's almost like he's in place of an employee, really. It's almost like an outsourcing thing. We're outsourcing our benefits management to him, and he does an incredibly good job.
We don't have the scale to hire that internally.
No, no, we don't, no, we don't, yeah. And he specializes in public benefits, I notice, yeah. But it's a good question, though, Melanie. It's a good question.
Well, I especially was thinking of you, Jack, because you always erasing that we should have these things bid out, and then it's coming out of your committee, and I thought, oh, Alderman Reisenberg! Where were you with the bidding?
That's a terrible thing, though, on my last full meeting, to be sticking it. You've been waiting to do that for three weeks.
It's similar to the city attorney, though. It's almost like an evergreen contract.
Yeah, it almost is, really, yeah.
Right, right.
Good point.
Just maybe an explanation would have been helpful on that, because I just kept looking and seeing what happened here.
It's kind of terse in there. Then you had another?
Yeah, number fourteen, which has to do with the Welcome Home campaign, and I just want to compliment everyone involved. It's certainly been a wonderfully thought-out campaign, but I would just really encourage our next level of this to start to really target the millennial population, however we do that, and I don't have the answer to it, but I just, I think sometimes we tend to preach to the choir with this campaign in some of our ad placements, and I just would like to see that expanded to include, you know, I don't know whether it's Grubhub that we have pop-ups on, or exactly how we do that to reach millennial populations, if there are ads on Zillow or whatever it is, but I just would like to see us really explore where we're placing those ads so that we're targeting a specific audience, and that would be my comment on that, and I just wanted to voice that opinion.
Mr. Mayor, may I just have a quick response? Thank you. We're, I mean, thank you for this suggestion, and also thank you for the praise. We have three quarters of our committee sitting in the room tonight. Deb Fisher and Susan Banks and I are joined by Phil Gator on this committee. We certainly are very confident that we have a solid look and a clear direction. You will see changes. We will probably be, I think, whether advertising, more online sort of things, we're looking at a number of different things. But I would just, for a second, respond to the preaching to the choir. One of the really significant benefits that we feel this campaign has achieved is to remind us all as community members in Lake Forest of how much we have to offer here. And we know that one of the best ways we have of attracting people, millennials and otherwise, to Lake Forest is for people who are happily living here to tell their friends, you know, come out here. And I think we have heard from so many people in town, it's just great to be reminded of all the benefits. So, to be honest with you, that's the, and obviously, that doesn't really cost us anything. I mean, clearly, our ads and so on are reminding, but we really, that has just been, I think we were hoping for that, but, you know, it's not completely measurable, but we do know that word of mouth is just huge. So, I hope that choir keeps working for us, because we need them.
From the very small sample on the Lansing family, the forty-somethings all read those magazines, and it's their friends.
Yeah, no, they do, but I think it's, I think part of what Melanie is suggesting, though, is that we, you know, we reach them, and the Sheridan Road, which have been terrific ads, and actually, if you go to, just, if you go to the website, they're all there, so, the city website, you can see them, if you ever want to see them as a group, because it gives you a real sense of our brand on this. You know, we'd like to get more people out from the city, and they're not reading that, so we know that's not a group, and we think online may be a good way. So, look for some new strategies, but that same fine look that Phil Gator has created for us.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts from council? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the fourteen omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yes, so moved.
Thank you, Alderman. This is a roll call vote, City Clerk.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
That concludes the agenda for this evening. And I calmly reach for the gavel and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Just do it normally. We are adjourned.